Good evening, everyone. My name is Brandon Sanders and I am the 2019 District Teacher of the Year and Chair of the Fort Mill School District Teacher Forum. On behalf of our Teacher Forum and tonight's Program Coordinator, Nicole Lefave, the 2020 District Teacher of the Year, we'd like to welcome everyone at home to our Virtual School Board Candidate Forum. At this time, I'd like to introduce our moderator for this evening. Lucas McFadden is originally from Fort Lawn, South Carolina, and graduated from the College of Charleston with a Bachelor of Arts degree. He has served on the Lancaster County United Way Board and the Youth Leadership U-LEAD Planning Council. Mr. McFadden has been an anchor and producer for the Emmy Award-winning CN2 News team since September 2008. Lucas and his beautiful wife Katie and their daughter Collins love the city of Rock Hill, the tri-county, and look forward to giving back to the community they all love. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Lucas McFadden from CN2 News. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, and good evening to you candidates. We certainly appreciate your time and then expertise for running for a political office, and we certainly appreciate all that you've done to this point. We have got a lot of questions we'll get to as much as we can in this hour. We've already gone over the rules with the candidates, but we will start with them. They will introduce theirselves, and then we'll go through with the questions after that. We'll start with candidate number one. Anthony Bodie.
Scott Frateroli.
Hazel Frick.
Jessica Rhonda Jones.
Takisha Pollock.
Hi, I'm Kristi Spears.
The questions tonight, well, they've come from you, right there at home. They've come from teachers, the community leaders, and families. Three hundred responses, in fact, and again, we've whittled these down to as many as we can get to in this one hour Candidate Forum. So with that being said, we'll get right to it. Each candidate will get one minute to answer each question. We'll start with question number one, with candidate number one to my right. If elected or re-elected, what are the top three issues you intend to do something about during your tenure on the Fort Mill School Board?
Thank you. Thank you. The top three things that I would focus on would be managing, managing, managing strategies, school safety, teacher shortage, onboarding, and retention.
Thank you so much. Mr. Frateroli.
Yeah, I'd like to first thank the Teacher Forum for the opportunity tonight. I think at looking at this, the most important thing to consider is being able to establish positive relationships, because that's really what being an effective board member is about, to work with the other board members. But the top three things that I really think as a district we need to look at is definitely teacher retainment and recruitment, making sure that we have those effective teachers and that we're able to hold on to them. Definitely managing growth. I think growth is a factor with that, and making sure that we're upholding and able to pass an impact fee again that provides that relief to our taxpayers. And the third thing would be to look at our strategic plan and see how we can continue to make strides and not settle for status quo, and looking at programs like adding additional 4K programs, additional trade programs, and expanding our virtual options.
Thank you so much. Ms. Frick.
Three things, as a board member, I would like to encourage the board to look at is getting a tech school, building a tech school here in Fort Mill for those students that just have no desire to pursue a college education. A lot of them like to work with their hands. I think this is something we need to really look at. Another thing I would like for the board to look at would be utilizing grant writing and local businesses. I would like for our district to re-establish a driver's ed program. I think that would be an enormous service for our parents and our community. Another thing I think that we need to look at is providing a drug program for students. A lot of these students, this is a challenge for them in their home and personally, and a lot of the drug programs of years ago are long gone now, so that's three things I would like for us to look at.
Thank you so much. Same question, Ms. Jones.
I really have a concern surrounding communication, so one of the first things I would be interested in addressing is the mode of communication, and just to make sure that we have communication standards that are being followed, that are traceable. Another issue I feel like would benefit from some attention are our current policies. I would like to ensure that our current policies are reviewed, and if it needs to be, revised. And I would also like to look at a lack of policies. I would like to do some research, get some feedback from parents in the community to ascertain whether or not there are policies that we should have in place that we don't.
Thank you so much. Ms. Newton.
I think it's important for us to look at the social-emotional well-being of all students in the district. I think that there is an opportunity for us to really enhance what we have already in the school district. Additionally, I think that it's important for us to have partnerships with community agencies and local businesses. I think that when students leave Fort Mill School District, they can leave real hard skills already being in the workplace. Thirdly, teacher retention and recruiting, I think it's important for us to keep the teachers that we have and focus on keeping them happy and making sure that they have everything that they need to do their job effectively.
Ms. Pollock.
Thank you. So the top three things that I have would be to pamper it engagement model, where parents feel like they have a method to communicate upward, not only when they have issues, but generally so that the board and the district understands the sentiment of the parents, so frequent communication. Also, advanced offerings for non-GT students, to be able to provide advanced classes for students who may not be able to test at the GT level but still need that opportunity to be able to showcase and learn advanced skills. And then the third, I would say, is equity and budgeting, realizing that not everyone needs the same thing, but giving schools what they need and building equity into the budget model.
Ms. Spears.
Thank you. One of the worst things about going last is there have been some great ideas that have been mentioned. The good news is many of them are already in our strategic plan, so let me talk about it in terms of short term. So in the short term, we've got to ensure that we have a safe method for bringing our students back. We hope after the first of the year, that's what was discussed at a recent board meeting, but also next year in terms of ongoing virtual opportunities and what that might look like. Midterm, we've got to continue our proactive planning for growth. We know that we will continue to welcome new students into our community, and we've got to make sure that we have the facilities, the teachers, the recruitment that's necessary to be able to accommodate those additional growths, which I would then go to a long-term strategy. The impact fee, we've got to not only resolve the current situation, but it will have to be refreshed in 2023, and that will happen about the same time that I expect some long-term reform at the state level that could impact our budgets that we'll have to watch very closely.
Thank you so much. Question two, and Mr. Frateroli, you will begin this round. Question number two, do you feel per student funding levels allocated by the state are sufficient? Why or why not?
No, and I know I have a whole minute to discuss this, but you know, the truth is, the state of South Carolina has never fully funded the per pupil allocation that's been outset since the EFA, EIA was established in the seventies and eighties. And every year, it's a constant disappointment as well as a struggle when we go to budget and we're not funded at the requirement that the law says that we should be funded at. So I really think there's got to be a lot of advocacy from our community, from our board, to really talk to legislators about why we're not being funded at the adequate levels that we need to support our students and our staff.
Thank you so much. Ms. Frick.
Classroom teacher of thirty-six years, no, I do not think that the state of South Carolina funds education enough. I was always having to look for supplies and materials. Fort Mill does a good job implementing, and the parents were wonderful. They would constantly, I would say I need, and they would send them, but you shouldn't have to do that. The state needs to step up and realize that education is key. We want good citizens. They need to be educated, therefore, education needs to be fully funded. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jones.
As far as whether or not we are fully funded, I am not sure if we are or are not, because currently, we, the formula we're using is a formula, is the original formula. We haven't updated the formula that we currently use. I know there is some legislation and they're looking at using a new formula, so once the new formula is implemented, you know, it's hard to say whether or not we will be fully funded.
All right. Thank you so much. Ms. Newton.
No, I do not think that we are fully funded by the state. We need to do more on a local level to advocate for a change, and as a board member, we need to do more advocating more on the state level. So the answer is no, we are not being fully funded, and we need to do something about it.
Thank you so much. Ms. Pollock.
So I'm going to sentiment, give the same sentiment that everyone else, obviously it's not. But where I differ is I think we can't worry about the state, because they are never going to be able to give us the money that we need. I think what we have to do as a community and a district is figure out what we're going to do with what we have, and maximize it and make it work to the best of our ability and what we have. So no, but we got to figure out a different way.
Thank you so much. Ms. Spears.
The universal answer, no, of course it's not funded. And I actually feel like we do maximize the dollars we get, but just to put it in real dollars, and since we are $675 per student underfunded, that's about $12 million for this calendar year alone, or this school year alone, that would pay for an additional 150 teachers, or it could pay for an additional 75 teachers and a tax break for our residents and our businesses. So absolutely, we are not funded, and it is having an impact. We have people doing extra duty as a result of that and covering for things that we're not able to provide, some of the benefits that we would like in our schools because of the lack of funding, doing the best we can with what we have, but it's clearly not enough.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bodie.
No, I don't think so, and this is where I think the collaboration of key stakeholders with our board members, our state senators, and even those folks out in the community. I think we all need to listen, learn, and engage with each other, and I believe that we can do those three things, I think we could bring those things to fruition.
Thank you so much. Question three, and Ms. Frick, you'll begin this round. Question number three, as a board member, how will you work to support our teachers and help recruit and retain our amazing educators?
Okay, as a classroom teacher of thirty-six years, that question's near and dear to my heart. Retaining and supporting our teachers is crucial. They are working harder now than they have ever worked. We need to support them in every way we can. There's lots of ways you can support a teacher, and not just monetarily, you can send a kind email, or a note, or a card, you know, hey, you're doing a great job. I know I used to have parents who'd show up at my door with a little bouquet of flowers picked out of their yard, and that would boost my spirits. We need to work on retaining these teachers, keeping them here. Fort Mill has always been the number-one school district in the state of South Carolina to teach in, as far as I'm concerned, and as far as a whole lot of people are concerned. So we need to put our heads together and really give this some thought. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Jones.
In response to the question, when it comes to supporting our teachers, I think the first thing we need to do is listen to them. When they verbalize what their needs are, we need to listen, acknowledge their concerns, and collaborate to ensure that we can meet their needs. As far as retention is concerned, if there is a retention problem, a lot of times, that can be combated by meeting their needs, and we're not going to know what their needs are if we're not listening and if we're not engaging with our teachers.
Thank you so much. Ms. Newton.
I think by focusing on the teachers that we have today, it doesn't make sense to recruit teachers if we have teachers going out the back door when we get teachers in the front door. So with that said, I think it's important for us to support the teachers that we have, make them feel valued, support their professional development, and they can be the recruitment tool we need to recruit highly qualified teachers.
Thank you so much. Ms. Pollock.
So for teacher retention, I think that some of the panelists already said this, but we have to listen to the teachers. I think that they are fully capable of telling us what it is that is wrong and how we can fix it, and then realize that it's all really a team effort, right? So parents, this community, business, elected officials, if we are saying that we are serious about education and serious about it, collaboratively, we all need to figure out what our teachers need, if it's support, if it's funding, if it's supplies, whatever it is that they need, let's work collaboratively as a community to make sure that they are getting everything that it is that they need, because they deserve it. They're on the front line, and they deserve it.
Thank you so much. Ms. Spears.
So I often describe our teachers as the secret sauce of the Fort Mill School District, and it is absolutely critical that we listen, that we collaborate, we provide all the supports that are needed. On the retention front, it's an unfortunate year, because I know right now, a lot of our volunteers are somewhat unable to, unable to help with some of the extra activities, and there's a lot on their plate. I look forward to getting past that where we can provide some more support. We do try to continue to fund our teacher pay at the highest rate possible. We're currently 15% above the state level, and we, in fact, funded the step increase. We were one of the few districts in the state that did, because the state did not actually fund that. We chose to do that on our own. As far as attracting new teachers and recruiting, we've actually talked about needing to go to where the teachers are being produced from colleges, so we're talking about where are the best opportunities outside of even our own local couple of states to make sure that we get the right teachers in.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bodie.
Thank you. So I mentioned earlier that teacher shortage, onboarding, and retention was a concern of mine. Fort Mill School District has been perceived as a tradition of excellence. One of my greatest concerns is when we look at the growth that's taken place, and if we open up new buildings, there's going to be a new demand for teachers. New demand for teachers means, for the most part, a new crop of teachers, and there needs to be a robust onboarding. My bigger concern is, so that we don't compromise integrity of the tradition of excellence, we need to be able to find a creative way of retaining our senior teachers, the 20-to-25 year olds, who helped create this tradition of excellence.
Thank you so much. We will begin question number four.
Can I answer?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. Yes, sorry, sorry.
Teacher retainment and recruitment is really a three-pronged process that I know the district has already invested a lot of time and efforts in our strategic planning, but really kind of looking at it is, are we able to hire the best, continue to hire the best of the best, because that's what we expect here in Fort Mill? And I think the board has really looked at initiatives in giving principals and administration the leeway that when they find good candidates and highly qualified candidates, that we're able to offer them those positions. The second part of that is, are we compensating fairly? You know, the board has continued to push for making sure that not only do we recognize that we are the best school district in the state of South Carolina, but that we're compensating our people like they're the best employees in the state of South Carolina. You know, we had a recent Forbes article that came out that said that this is one of the best places to work in the state of South Carolina. And the third thing that we really need to look at is how are we supporting teachers? Are we making their lives easier on a day-to-day basis, because every day is different and every day is difficult? So are we approving those positions on a day-to-day basis, and are we supporting them?
Thank you so much. Now it's time for question number four, and we'll start with Ms. Jones. Do you support students wearing masks during the school day? And if not, what is your response to the proven research showing the effectiveness of mask-wearing and reducing the spread of the coronavirus?
In response to my support of students wearing masks during the school day, that is not anything for me personally to support or not to support, because that is not a decision that the Fort Mill School Board can make. That decision comes from the South Carolina Department of Education. The South Carolina Department of Education has mandated that masks are to be worn, and they have mandated this based on best practice guidelines that have been, excuse me, that have been mandated by the CDC. So I think sometimes individuals are confused about how much power that the board has, and we can make many decisions, but that is not a decision that the board can make. That comes straight from the South Carolina Department of Education.
Thank you so much. Ms. Newton.
I would have to agree. The regulations does come from the state. However, personally, I don't like wearing masks. My kids, it's hard for them to wear masks as well, but we do have to look at what is mandated, and then also, we have to look at really giving some concessions to students, because if we look at the younger kids, a lot of times, they're not wearing their masks the correct way in the first place. So how effective is it really if you're not wearing it the correct way? Additionally, I think we need to really give some concessions to those students and really be creative in our approach while still being safe.
Thank you so much. Ms. Pollock.
So for this issue, I would say that it deeply affects me. My kids are virtual. We've lost family members because of COVID, and so I've been looking at the numbers in Fort Mill, and the school district is doing an amazing job, and I think it is because of the protocols that are in place. And so if the goal is to keep those kids as safe as possible, I would say that continuing to wear them is the right decision. I know it's hard. It's hard for everyone at this point, but we're trying to keep them safe, and it's working. And so until something else comes that will be as effective as the masks are right now, I would say we stick with what works.
Thank you so much. Ms. Spears.
Look, I know it's a lightning rod discussion out in the community about masks or no masks. Nobody likes to wear masks. I don't like to wear masks, but to everybody's point, A, it comes from the State Department, and we obviously will comply with the State Department regulations. B, our goal right now is to keep our kids in school, and while we have had a few cases, we feel very confident that the masks and the social distancing have worked and have prevented any outbreaks from occurring in our schools, and that is the most important thing. They may only be two days a week right now, they, some of the classes are in-person five days, but it is so critical that we not have the spread occur in our schools, and if masks are one piece of that, then so be it. It's actually not as big of a problem for our students, I think, as it is for a lot of our parents. They seem to have adjusted pretty well, and I'm very proud of them.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bodie.
Thank you. So I think we should follow the guidance, with all that in mind. I'm not an expert at that, or with your particular question, but I would say that what's important is, is outside of those guidances, that we make sure that we're challenging the status quo that would be outside of the guidances. So if there are other things that we can do to help mitigate some of the concerns of the parents and the kids, I think we should always take a look at that.
Thank you so much. Mr. Frateroli.
It's going to be a lot of repetition in that you can go out to the State Department of Education, as well as the DHEC's site, to see where the guidance is coming from for our school district on wearing masks in the classroom. I think, you know, to kind of build on what you said there, Mr. Bodie, our district has done a lot, and when the portal opened for us to order things on the South Carolina Cares Act, we jumped all over it, and we're ordering additional desk shields, additional cleaning measures, additional things that we can do to support and really help the things that you talked about, Dr. Newton, and making sure those kids that are struggling to adjust to it, that they have that opportunity to remove their mask in a family setting in the classroom with a desk shield. So I think we're trying to do our best, but I would agree with what everybody said. I think the district's doing an admirable job, and it's really a testament to how we've laid out the detailed protocols.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Frick.
I was asked this question by so many people about masks. I went and researched it too, like a lot of you did. I read the CDC and the DHEC, and the State Department of Education did the best job of explaining it, and yes, I think they need to wear masks, because that's what the State Department says. I think keeping our kids safe has always been a crucial component of education. We want to keep the schools open, we want to keep the children in there, getting their education. I will be the first one to throw my mask away when all clear is sounded, but I think to keep everybody safe, it's important to wear masks. I'm a rule follower as a teacher, and since the State Department says that, then that's what we have to do, like it or not.
All right. Thank you so much. We will begin question five, and Ms. Newton will begin this round. Do you plan to address the growing need for diversity training and racial sensitivity training? With all this turmoil in society right now, what are your ideas for addressing the needs of our BIPOC students and teachers within our district?
I think that we need to take a look at what is working and what is not working. I think we need to do needs assessments. I think we need to look at our current student body, and I think we need to gather the data once we figure out what's working and what's not working, and actually make a plan for that. So I think diversity is needed throughout Fort Mill. I think that we can do a good job as being the trendsetters for others to follow, and I believe that we can do that, because we are a number-one school district, and I am honored to be a part of it and to be a part of the community.
Thank you so much. Ms. Pollock.
I am a big proponent of diversity and inclusion. I think the fundamental thing, I know there are tons of terms that are coming around, but fundamentally, people want to be accepted for who they are, and so I think everyone would benefit from learning someone else's perspective, and so I think it's a good thing, right, to be able to learn about other people's upbringing and their ethnic background, their religious background. Like, I think that's only going to make us stronger as a district, from a student standpoint or from a teacher's standpoint, and I think what it will provide is a stronger foundation for us to be a community and to accept everyone's differences, so that they can feel like they are their complete self.
Thank you so much. Ms. Spears.
I agree wholeheartedly with the, especially the sensitivity training, and I think it's important to note, when we talk about diversity, we have, we actually have roughly 35% diverse population as it relates to ethnic background. However, we have like 40 languages spoken, so there is a broad swath of diversity, different cultural norms, and so I think embracing all of that so that we understand more about one another, because we're better off if we understand the other person's perspective and their background. I am proud to say that a lot of our schools have different clubs and organizations so that they can meet and feel comfortable and learn more about the different cultures and different things that are, that some of our communities, I mean, some of our students possess.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bodie.
Thank you. I'm a father of a biracial child named Madison who loves Fort Mill School District. I'm an uncle of a African-American young man named Devon who loves Fort Mill. I'm an uncle of a African-American young man named Devon who loves Fort Mill School District. As I've been involved in underserved communities, one of the things I've come across is the underserved community feeling like that they haven't been wanted or welcomed. I think that there's been willingness, I think, from the school district to try to make better on this particular subject. But I think in order for us to prosper and move forward, it goes back to we got to listen, learn, and engage with each other and not be afraid of it.
Thank you so much. Mr. Frateroli?
Yeah, thank you. So we've made a concerted effort at the district level to make sure that we're doing the things recruiting-wise to go out and find good-quality candidates that would help us in our school district with diversity. I think the other thing that we're looking at is I think sensitivity training has to be embedded in everything that we do because this is, school is a people business, and it's working with children and it's working with other adults. So I think understanding and being sensitive to how other people react to what you do on a day-to-day basis is important. I think there's plenty of programs going out there in schools right now. I was proud to be the principal at Sugar Creek Elementary School when we started the No Place For Hate program, which was a grant written through the Anti-Defamation League that really focused on how people treat other people and how you can recognize differences. And I think our schools are doing that, and they're embedding that into the day-to-day operations. But there's always, always room for us to improve.
Thank you so much. Ms. Frick?
I am the grandmother of two biracial young men, and so this is near and dear to my heart. I think it's important to always think about the words that come out of our mouth, especially when children are nearby. We need to work on those things. When I was a teacher, I know in my classroom, the guidance counselors came in and did many programs with that. The children were great, taking care of other children from different cultures and asking questions about them. That's just, you know, we need to be very careful about what we say and how we act. And I think it would really do our district a service if perhaps we had some parent workshops on this very subject. A lot of times, this is a problem that starts in the home and could be addressed there and give them some ideas of things to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Jones?
I have to concur with the rest of the Board, with the rest of the members, that cultural diversity training is extremely important, especially for teachers. I don't know that there's anything that we could do in individual homes of the students, but at the end of the day, students take on, they do what they see adults do. So yes, cultural diversity training is very important because it leads to understanding. Understanding leads to communication. Communication leads to healthy relationships, and healthy relationships lead to healthy communities.
Thank you so much. We will begin now question number six with Ms. Pollock. Can you explain to the public the difference between the Fort Mill School District budget's capital versus operations and how each are funded?
Great question. So to me, the difference would be capital is concrete buildings, any type of infrastructure that's needed. Operations would, I would consider that like running the railroad. And I am not sure if I am 100% clear on how it is funded, but taxes, bonds, and of the like, capital financing, but that's how I distinguish it in my head.
Thank you so much. Ms. Spears?
So our operational budget is what runs our schools. We set it every year. It's about $165 million, and it is made up 90-ish percent, 89% of is staff. And so that is what pays our teacher salaries. That is what pays the light bill, but it is largely employees that work for the district. It is paid for roughly half and half from the state and the funds we receive from the state and the funds we receive from local taxes. However, on operations, those local taxes all come from, for the most part, commercial as opposed to residence. On the flip side, our capital budget is what we use to build buildings, and that is funded initially by bond referendums approved by the community. And then we use local taxes to repay those bonds. That does hit the residents as well as the businesses in our community.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bodie?
Thank you. So the capital, as everyone said, would refer to the buildings. But I want to share with our audience this critical piece here. Kristi mentioned 164, 165 million dollars. Of that 164 million dollars, a portion of that comes from the state. Another portion of it comes from local taxes. What's important here that everyone should know, as we're going through this pandemic right now, and it could get worse, everyone should know that if we have any business closures, there's taxation that's lost. So the school, part of the budget comes from taxation. If there's a loss of taxation, that means it affects the budget. If there is a lack of taxation from our guests or customers going to a restaurant, that affects the actual budget. Lack of taxation means there's a problem potentially with the budget.
Thank you so much. Mr. Frateroli?
Yeah, actually, Ms. Spears' answer was perfect for the actual question as far as what it is and where it comes from. I think the things that I would add on just to help with understanding is really anything not only that's brick and mortar with building schools, but other things like transportation costs, cost of buses. We're able to build in some technology costs into some of the capital needs. But really, it's the operational budget that really tells us how many teachers we can hire, you know, what can we provide for teachers in the classroom? What are those per pupil allocations that we give to schools? And I think across the state, there's a lot of, you know, we go to a lot of meetings as current board members, and people don't want to hear about Fort Mill's problems. But the problem really is, is that all of our taxation, while we have many, many residences that are going up, we really rely on that business. And I think you hit it on the head that if there is an issue with businesses, it's going to hit us very hard in our district, so.
Thank you. Ms. Frick?
Okay. As a classroom teacher, this is not exactly my area of expertise. I would have to really study this if I get on the Board. But I know we used to hear a great deal about taxes and funding, and it was always a critical concern because there were years when the money was just so tight. We had to cut back in many areas. And I remember them asking us areas that we could cut back in, and would we do that? We need school buildings because we have to be able to accommodate all of our students, and we certainly need teachers and bus drivers, and taxes pay for a lot of that. So I know when people complain about their taxes, that's something to point out to them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Jones?
Well, as a healthcare professional, this isn't my area of expertise either. But I do have the working knowledge that our taxes and the revenue that our community generates through taxes absolutely affects our budget, you know, and our revenue. So right now, we're in the midst of a pandemic, you know? Every day, we're praying that things get better. But absolutely, you know, our state is opening up, and that's a good thing because, you know, we're not suffering the way we were in regards to taxes being generated, tax revenue being generated.
Thank you so much. Ms. Newton?
I just want to say, you know, from a capital budget standpoint, I think that it's important for us to really establish some partnerships. And I know we talk a lot up here about, you know, pandemic hitting and if businesses fail, you know, we're going to take a hit. But I think if we have some great partnerships in place with community agencies and with local businesses, we can have a two-way relationship as it relates to funding and as it relates to partnerships with the school.
Thank you so much. I think we will be able to get one more question in before we wrap up the evening with closing statements. Question number seven, we'll begin with Ms. Spears. How many Fort Mill School District School Board meetings have you physically attended in the last two years?
Well, we've probably had, we have two meetings a month. I have not missed one yet, so we sometimes take the month of July off. So give or take probably 20 a year, so 40, yeah, that's in the last two years. So probably about 40 school board meetings. However, that's the actual school board meetings. We generally spend two afternoons a month visiting all of our schools so that we get around to all of our schools. Obviously, we're not doing that right now because of the pandemic. I've spent probably four weekends at conferences with the School Boards Association, four or five days in Columbia advocating for some of the things we've talked about earlier, a number of ribbon-cutting ceremonies and other things that, you know, go along with board duties. So I'd say I give it probably 20 hours a week most weeks.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Bodie?
Thank you. I've attended 11 board meetings.
All right. Mr. Frateroli?
Everything that Ms. Spears just said, I've been included in. I wish I could give my number over the last 20 years because as a former teacher and principal in the district, over the last 20 years, it would be a number that would be tough for me to count. In the last two years in particular, in addition to all those things, I think I've missed in-person three times. Once was because I had the flu, but I did dial in. Once was because of the pandemic, and I was on vacation with my family, visiting family up north, and once because of a death in my family. So three meetings, but I've called in all three times, and we're happy that we're hopefully going to be able to revise so that virtual will be an option for school board members if they have to meet for an extenuating circumstances like I had.
Thank you so much. Ms. Frick?
Well, in the last two years, I've been at almost all the school board meetings except for about two and a half months when I had to have a knee replacement. So I wasn't able to go, but I have attended the majority of them because I thought if I wanted to run for school board, it was important that I knew what was going on, and I listened and I made notes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Jones?
Over the last two years, I have physically attended four school board meetings. But I have, and I do acquire the minutes from every school board meeting for the last, over the last two years. So although I was not able to attend in person, I have kept abreast of the Board's activities via the minutes that are posted on this school website, on the district website.
Thank you so much. Ms. Newton?
I have attended many, but roughly, I think about 12 I've attended. And as well as Ms. Jones, I've read the minutes to those who I wasn't able to attend.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Pollock?
So similar to the ladies, I actually, non-pandemic, I was not able to attend many of them because I had a job, although I sit on the SIC, so we would get updates there. I would read the minutes just to kind of stay abreast of what's going on. I would say, though, during this pandemic, I have watched every one of them virtually. And it's amazing because if I'm not able to attend, at least I can see it, and I hope that that actually stays because it allows parents like me to be able to be engaged.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, that will do it for the question portion of tonight's forum. We'll then move into closing statements. And given the time that we have, which is about 15 minutes, I know earlier, some of you all expressed that you would like two minutes for closing statements. So if it's fine with all of the candidates and fine with the forum, we'll give each candidate two minutes to wrap up their closing statements. And we'll begin with candidate number one, Mr. Bodie.
Thank you. And thank you for all of you joining us this evening. As you're still trying to make your decision on which candidate or candidates that you want to choose, I highly suggest that you judge your candidates this way. Number one, what's in the heart? What's driving a heart to serve? Number two, the credibility and trust that's in the community. That's what I'm known for. That's what I do on a daily basis, every other week, every month. Judge me by my experiences, which is a culmination of managing businesses, hiring employees, onboarding, you name it. And thank you for your support in voting for me.
Thank you so much. Mr. Frateroli?
Again, I'd like to thank the forum for hosting this event tonight and for everybody watching at home. I think as a voter, when you go to the ballot box, you're looking to check your own box on what you want your candidate to bring to the table. If you're a parent, you probably want somebody who really understands what happens in schools. You might want somebody who understands what you're going through as a parent as far as maybe academic gaps that they might have. You might have a child with special needs, or you might be looking for a candidate that serves side-by-side with you in PTO events, school improvement council events, on booster clubs. If you want a candidate like that, I check that box. You might be looking for a candidate, if you're a Fort Mill faculty member, that really understands what it means to support what's going on in our schools, that's been there and that has done it on a day-to-day basis, and really understands Fort Mill as an educator because Fort Mill is a unique place with very high accountability and very high achievement. You also want somebody that's going to maybe champion for you and making sure that you have the support that you need in your classroom, that your wage is continuing to go up, or potentially that you have the support that you need. If that's the person that you want, I check that box. And if you're a community member, stakeholder, you might want somebody who understands globally what our district does, who really understands schools, who understands budgeting, taxation, and who understands the big picture with strategic planning. And if you want that, I'm a candidate that checks that box. So while you've heard from seven candidates tonight, all with unique experiences, that might check a box or two, I'm a candidate that checks all of the boxes, and I would support your, I would love your support in this election with your vote. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Frick?
I was blessed enough to teach in the Fort Mill School District. When I began teaching in 1980, we had one elementary school. So I know what explosive growth is. I believe, firmly believe, that every child deserves a world-class education regardless of their level, regardless of their challenges and strengths and weaknesses. I believe they deserve a highly qualified teacher, one who has plenty of planning time and then implements thought-provoking lessons in her classroom and communicates well with her parents. I have served on many committees. I have written social studies, math, language arts curriculum. I have served on interview committees. I have, I know how an excellent classroom operates, how schools operate from the inside out, which is where I devoted my entire career to the education of students. I have sat on every side of the educational table as a teacher, a mother, and now as a grandmother. I want nothing, I have no political stepping stone in mind. I'm retired. I could be home right now baking cookies and watching movies. But I want to serve the Fort Mill community on the school board because I believe in our education here in Fort Mill. Fort Mill School District is number one in my heart, and I want to represent the students, the parents, the teachers, and the citizens of Fort Mill. So when you go vote November 3rd, make sure you cast your vote for Hazel Frick for Fort Mill School Board. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Jones?
I love the community I live in, and service is an expression of love. I am willing to serve my community. And so if you're looking for someone to serve this community who understands that parents elect the Board, if you're looking for someone who understands that accountability is important, if you're looking for an individual who values transparency, if you're looking for someone to advocate, to listen, to, one, listen to parents and teachers and advocate for their needs. to advocate, to list, to one, listen to parents and teachers and advocate for their needs to be met, then I'm, I'm your candidate. I am absolutely your candidate. I don't have any arterial, any, you know, motives here. I don't have any enemies to make or friends to keep. I decided to run for the Fort Mill School Board because although, although our school board has done a lot of good things, it's also important to do what is the right thing. I'm an advocate. I have strong Christian values. I love my community, and a vote for me would be a vote for transparency, a vote to be heard, and a vote to just do what is right. And thank you for your support.
Thank you so much. Ms. Newton?
First of all, I would like to thank the Teacher Forum for this opportunity and this platform to allow us to be here and to express our gratitude and our willingness to, to actually serve our community. I've been a teacher, counselor, administrator in some of the largest school districts in both North and South Carolina, also a licensed therapist, a wife, a mother of two, and one student that has special needs. If elected, I'll be bringing all of this wealth of knowledge and experience to the board. I have two advanced degrees and then a doctorate in educational leadership. But I think ultimately, the responsibility of the, of the district is to provide a quality education for all students. As a trustee, it's important for you to be a champion and an advocate on the local and on the state level. I've been an advocate for quite some time. I've marched in Columbia. I've marched in Raleigh, and I'm ready to be an advocate here locally for you and your family. I know firsthand how the effect of education have on students and also on the underserved. We must address the rapid growth budgets and buildings while also supporting our teachers and our staff. It's imperative that we have a diverse board who understands the needs of students and education as a whole. I am ready to serve. I'm willing to serve. If you will have me, let's work together.
Thank you so much. Ms. Pollock?
Thank you. So first, I would say thank you for having us. This has been a, a great event. I'm going to leave with the motto that I live my life by. Education is the great equalizer. I understand from a personal perspective the value of a quality education and how that education is a great foundation for success. Moreover, parent engagement adds to the success for students and for a school district. I've been a fam, a parent engagement advocate on the local and state level for the last six years. And what I want to do is to take that same grassroots energy that I am doing currently and move it to the board level. Because one thing that I understand is, we can make all of the decisions that we want to at the local, in the grassroots level, but the real change happens at the board. What I am asking is, if you believe that parent engagement is the key to ensure that we are successful here in Fort Mill, that you vote for me. You have three options, and I hope that I am one. My name is Tekeisha Pollock, and I am running for Fort Mill School Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Spears?
What, what a great evening and a great event, and, and there are some, some folks up here that have wonderful ideas for, for our board and for our district. I am a product of the Fort Mill School District. I graduated from Fort Mill High School. When I retired from Bank of America about five years ago, I got really heavily involved in the school from, from the PTOs and SICs and various committees and discovered just how much I had a passion for being involved in the district. I felt like then I had some skills that would be beneficial to the district. I did a lot of project management, risk management, change management, all of those things that the district has been going through for several years. For the last four years, I've served on the board. The last three as the chairwoman have poured my heart and soul into what I still believe is the best district, not just in the state but in the nation. We have the best teachers. We have the best parents. We have the best business and community leaders. We have great partnerships, and we've got awesome students. We have challenges. We are a large, growing district. We are a human business, and, and humans always have different opinions and different views, but I feel like we are in a great place to, to move forward. We've had a little sidestep with this pandemic, but we are on a trajectory for amazing continued things. I'd like very much to be a part of it. I'm Kristi Spears, and I'd be honored to have your vote on November 3rd.
Thank you so much. And thank you again, candidates, for stepping up to the plate, for taking your passion when it comes to education and the Fort Mill School District and doing something about that passion. I wish the national stage can see how all of you, how all the candidates tonight respected each other, respected the time and the process. And again, from all of us in the great state of South Carolina here in York County, thank you so much for stepping up to the plate. Would also like to thank the Fort Mill School District Teacher Forum, as well as Cattabba Ridge High School for hosting us tonight. You can check out your sample ballot if you want to see what's on the ballot for this year by going to sevotes.gov. Don't forget, Election Day is November the 3rd, though some folks are voting early now. In South Carolina, it's called in-person absentee voting, and that is currently underway in three locations throughout York County. Bottom line, get out and vote. Have a great night.